Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. We have enough members here to establish the call. And now, Park, in the mayor's absence, I guess we should let the record reflect that I will be chairing the meeting. And please call over.
Say Columbia, Crockett.
Present.
Franklin.
Here.
Etherly.
Here.
Forward.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
One absent.
This is a special call meeting, and as such, with dispensial all formalities, each of you should have before you a copy of the notice for the special call meeting, which has five items that appear on the agenda.
We're not on video.
Five items that appear on the agenda. The first being water issue status update. The mayor is not here. I don't know anything about the current status other than the last text message that he sent us at the group. Unless someone else has additional information, city attorney or city clerk.
Mayor Franklin, give me this week on the text message he sent you.
Ms. Rand, Alex, go just ask some things.
Yes, I don't know anything.
We'll move on from agenda item number one to agenda item number two. Country enforcement, this one they gave us before several times before now. And it deals with employees, families of employees doing business with the city. I don't think any amount has ever been suggested to.
Mr. Franklin said $200,000 at some point, and then he said $200,000. Nobody, because you all had discussed the amount.
I think $20,000, I can't get too far into that. We haven't thought for the purpose of that, $20,000 would be good.
What is it now? Twenty-five hundred dollars, aiming. As I was talking to my ass, even though it's newspaper. Most of my is married to my sister. So technically, when I spoke to contract with him, if my sister has interest in business, give examples of, on the planning commission, not planning commission, A and P commission, we have Mr. Staley.
Staley.
And her husband does business with the city. We had, do it here, we had Delk. I think it's Chandler Delk, or the partner. And Delk ran this business with the existing support. And that's only, almost, it's not just those few, probably five or six that we can name. Man. Albert, kind of Albert, okay, okay, Albert, excuse me. And so, there are numerous that we can name, but there's also ordinance upon the points. The city mayor, I don't know, they did a doctor this year, they increased it to a hundred thousand. I don't have suggested numbers for you, but it's been a while. And at some point, we also have Jagger Smith and Casey O'Teague. And there may be others that I'm missing, missing in matters.
I can't think of anybody else.
This might be a call order question.
That's the one the city attorney provided about three or four months ago.
In August.
Yeah.
Yes. Fifty days on schedule.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did the same, we dated, because we got the job best, had the same, that's no problem.
Any desire to take this up today? I, I, I moved it. Four hundred thousand dollars. Here, here.
You moved out, what's the one?
Uh, no, to a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand, okay.
So is most of the places suspended, will place on the third final read, read the title on it?
Motion by Franklin, second by Ford to suspend the ordinance. It is to a base ordinance number.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine on the third final read, reading the title on it. And call over.
Franklin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Five yes, one absent.
Order number thirty-nine, twenty-two, and the ordinance to waive in conflict with the contract who was related to a specific city employee, other ground officers and employees to contract with the city, repealing our orders of partisan ordinances in conflict with here, turn emergency for other purposes. Need a motion to adopt, is that a motion to adopt?
So move. Motion by Crockett, second by Franklin to adopt the ordinance, and call over.
Crockett.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Five yes, one absent.
There's a mercy clause, a motion to adopt mercy.
So move. Second. Motion by Franklin, second by Crockett, and call over.
Forward.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
One absent.
Motion, I'm sorry, ordinance passing. And the next item on the agenda is base pay ordinance. We have a proposed base pay ordinance, we found you.
As early as you brought to the ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-two, that's passed by the, by the board, as we placed it before you, this base pay ordinance changed some of the things. I don't know if you have any questions about it, I haven't studied it in particular, see what changed in the order. Now, I know one of the changes that was made is in, near the back, in Article Three, it changes the time limit for base payments, one hundred eighty days to ninety days, that's Article Number Three. But that's one of those changes that's made. The other changes, that I can see just on the face, on front page, that the mayor, forty-eight base pay to sixty-five base pay, that's the chief of staff here, the thirty-two thousand base pay, chief of staff, the new base pay goes to sixty-five.
Fifty-one million.
Ma'am?
On the mayor, we're gonna take me one dollar.
Be more than chief of staff.
A dollar more than chief of staff, is what I've seen. Now, the purchase, you already previously removed the purchase order person, as I've advised before, that didn't very practical. Our ordinance, our purchase order requires that be a purchase order person. Part of the issue that we made with the overspending from the mayor's office, and the one thing that Mr. Franklin, Mayor Lake, that we're gonna have to deal with dealing with, is spending crisis is the mayor's office. And it is my advice that the council make sure that the budget for a purchase order person, because that's how it properly works. Since 2011, 2012, I can't remember what year it was, we haven't had the position, and the base pay, I mean, the purchase order was not working properly, because somebody has to watch the stuff every day. And that's what the purchase order person was for. And the compliance officer, I don't have any details on the compliance officer.
Is this, from what it looks back to me, they're taking the human resource, the HR director. And they two, is this?
It was HR director, it's thirty-two thousand, HR director's no longer in this base pay. It was clerical, HR clerical.
Eight twenty-two.
Now, the base pay, simply creates a position, it does not fund the position, as you already called. The opposite of what it says, until the budget passed that funds it, is create a position without a funding. Now, as relation to the mayor's office, the mayor's salary will go to sixty-five thousand dollars, from forty-eight thousand.
May I ask, does that include his, is his travel gonna be in addition to this salary or included in?
It's in the sixty-five.
In the sixty-five, okay.
So does that travel, the car lot?
Yeah.
Right. The one thing about me is.
But it's gonna be stripped out.
The.
If he driving, drive a city vehicle.
Oh, he's gonna drive a city vehicle, okay.
Yeah, the one thing about me is, I think what happened to the city treasurer is that previously, the mayor's being paid the forty-eight thousand plus the twelve thousand aimless for expenses, a thousand dollars a month. But he received a W-2D exclusive of all that, because of nature of other, I think, we were honored that his office and salary, so really, it's in the large increase, we had to make that, it's.
Yeah, because that was sixty thousand with the.
Right.
Forty plus the twenty.
Right.
He gets like five thousand.
So, let me, let me tell you about the base pay ordinance, because Mr. Franklin asked me to help him to do this, and I have to, because I wrote for base pay on it, so I had to template. We moved code enforcement up into the mayor's office instead of being a separate department. HR has been re-titled and repurposed, because you got some stuff entered, and you don't have that, and it said, I'm McCoy, but it's not gonna be called HR anymore, that compliance officer would do some of what HR does, the person officer would do, person, Andre has already described, the water clerk, you're gonna take the pressure off of the people in the water company, trying to decide who gets paid, when they get paid, that person would be responsible to the mayor, not to a water manager. So that's one of the people that's moved out of the water up to the mayor's list of people that he will have direct supervision over. The chief of staff has been increased, without the chief of staff position, it's an actual chief of staff this time, that's the anticipation. What the, what Willis, Hallwell, Riff, taking secretary of college. So the chief of staff is supposed to do what the mayor could or should do in his absence, and then supervise all these people, all these departments, make sure they're functioning at the level, they're functioning, that they're doing the man they're supposed to do, whether it's reporting, or there's training, whatever it is they're supposed to do, make sure it's happening. For example, the mayor may ask, why you got three police cars that exit on every night for thirty minutes?
Right.
Because it's been happening recently, to have seen. So, you know, that, that kind of thing, and make sure that your police officers, we saw on the videos, police officers saying things that were not necessarily appropriate, because they haven't been trained. Well, we don't have jurisdiction to do something that they have jurisdiction to do. Some of them may have felt intimidated by some of the people that are in the video with them, but those kinds of things. So the mayor's office, some of those changes, the base pay ordinance had a hundred and eighty-two slots, this one has a hundred and eighty-two minus three, whatever that number is. Because we went back, because the mayor asked me to add one clerk to the mayor's office. So it's three slots left. One of the slots that was taken out, was an assistant police chief. The mayor's gonna direct the chief of police to five, because then they had a captain to do what assistant chief do, if you need to work. We got a bunch of folks sitting around there, not working, my understanding, Dr. Mayor Lake, I ain't making this up, if I see one, I'm dead. And so, the assistant police chief have been stressed, the police department lost one position, they had to get four positions, they get fifty-three positions. Base pay for the police chief has said it's seventy thousand dollars, the police chief has more responsibility, he supervises fifty-two people in addition to himself. The fire department only has thirty, so their base pay, that's five thousand. And then, you have a public works position, it's been eliminated, and that's part of the reason the chief of staff, you may say this position is about public works, and so then you separate.
Yeah, the practical part about that, we still would have to do an ordinance to, because you created a whole department, that to do ordinance to appeal that, stop that ordinance. But go ahead.
So the public works position has been taken out of there, and you're making the department here responsible for their various departments. Because you have a public works person, then you have somebody under them, and they have a form, according to the base pay ordinance, which really no different than you were going for, it's had to be created above the first position. And it's just probably too much for one person to try to provide all those positions. The park department's totally gone, so it created the park's grounds people, so you at least have somebody responsible for, even up the park. They won't be able to balance it up, they have to coordinate the street department, the sanitation department, but you at least have a court person that's gonna be answerable to the parks and the condition of the parks, and whether the parks are, I'm not sure what's under the city's control, or certainly North Ellen, or Water and City's Park, Southern Park, and the one on Little Grove, at Titchfield. It's certainly old, but you know, you had a golf course, you also had arm rings, some other stuff, years ago, I don't know what you had now, that has to be figured out. But those were the primary changes on that.
Who you saying? Public works came out, and what else?
Public works came out of the base pay, it was at fifty-five base pay, but you pay it about seventy-five, eighty-four. It came out.
And what about two?
The other two that were taken out, one was assistant police chief, then gone, and then there's another one.
Assistant fire chief.
Yeah, but they still kept third position, so it's still the same third, just the title will change. Yes, ma'am, it's the same.
The director of Landfield.
Yeah.
Seven three, that was, the old was, the old was ten.
Well, see, the old was like, like fifty, but he was on the public works person. And at the end of seventy-three, he said it was your life, I think you could get a competitive Landfield manager, you're gonna need that kind of money. And I'd like to tell you also how we came with the numbers. I took the number from two thousand five, put it in the CBI, the Consumer Price Index, and so, that's what that money would have been increased to based on inflation and all that, over that course of time. So the seventy-three dollars is really like four and five, forty-eight, in two thousand five. Yes, and the water, it wasn't, water. Now, the water department, thinking on that, because we paid ninety-six base pay, which two, and forty-eight, please.
What we paying, Mr. Franklin, right now?
Paying six days. You're paying six days.
Seventy-three, five. What's going on, DSA, is it that, you're below the industry standard? Now, Mayor Lake, Franklin, have you reviewed this?
Yes.
Now, as it relates to, have you ever tested a good mayor's, current mayor's budget?
Uh, no, sorry.
I know we haven't passed the budget yet, but I'm trying to see, is this gonna be budget neutral, or what type of increase we're looking at?
I, I knew there was budget, I should have, I have.
Why don't you say after today, but I'm just trying to say before we go forward, what we're looking at?
So do we put, what, in the whole budget, I just, you just got nothing to tell me, the number that's. And this is new, what is this, the new base pay, I'm sorry, base pay.
What do you, what do you question, you're trying?
With the old base pay, the amount was, and with the new.
Oh, you added them all together?
The code enforcement officer that we have now, she start with, she.
The current code enforcement officer makes twenty-eight.
So, no, no, what makes it nine?
Huh? Pardon?
Now, anybody want to sign?
Uh, she makes twenty-eight. There was two positions in the old budget, one was like a senior code enforcement at thirty, and then a regular code enforcement twenty-eight.
You got three, you got three.
Well, three.
Maybe you got twenty-eight and one at thirty.
Okay, right now, the young lady that's in the back now doing code enforcement makes twenty-eight. The person that was hired in as code enforcement slash animal control is making the thirty.
What about that?
Well, on paper, Wednesday, we had said animal control, and we had control at the term, but I think budget led, budget wise, the animal control office is twenty-two thousand.
It is in the budget, yes, but when I looked on the application, and the only reason I say it, says code enforcement slash animal control, thirty thousand.
Right.
And that's.
Is this been filled?
Pardon?
It's been filled over?
I, I don't understand.
It has been filled.
Yes, uh-huh, it's Ms. Beth Florick, the lady that was at the Humane Society. Apparently, we had run an ad at some time for animal control, and it was filled, a couple of three days ago.
Well, the issue was, that's what the new man, once he come in, well, she came home with all positions.
Right, so that's.
Because she's code enforcement, of course, she's a controller.
But since he hired, but she needs to handle the control, because she's not.
Two days, you know, you, you. So, we hear what it is, I'm not, okay. I saw on the paper that she went out of control, has a vehicle that says out of control.
So have you reviewed that? Are you saying currently, we have two people in code enforcement?
No, no, no.
We have one in code enforcement, and one that's being paid out of code enforcement, but it's saying.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, but you said, the title that she, the person had, had something there, is code enforcement slash animal control.
That's what's on the application, yes, ma'am, that was given to us to put in the computer.
That's a new person.
Yeah. The other young lady, Ms. Williams, is strictly code enforcement.
Is that John, like the safety care back there?
No, she's an actual code enforcement officer, she's been to training, she just finished up her asbestos training, and I think she's been to plumbing, and that's Ms. Williams.
Okay. Was the, the name is?
Lakeisha Williams, yeah.
But, as I'm always implying, when we first consolidated, Helen used to have a lot of these concurrent positions, where you were playing two different roles to increase the salary. And since consolidation, we have not done that, we try to keep it two separate, base pay, keep them separate. That shouldn't be a person that's blazing, hiring the code enforcement, and then working out of control, if you have control of code enforcement. Same thing, this place of the lawsuit that we have right now, where we have a position that was not created, has never been created, has never been funded, but being paid as HR, would be assumed at this very moment.
What is, I'm going to the water, water, I see we said superintendent, assistant superintendent, they take both positions.
So, I'm not thinking those numbers didn't change, one, for the change in names, so we have dual names, we have assistant superintendent, superintendent, and talent, West Island you have supervisor, operational maintenance, supervisor, treatment. And basically, we're saying, you don't need all of that, you got one city, you need to merge, you don't have a police officer that works only in West Island, police officer only in talent, with the water company, that's how they do it, you still got something only talent, and only West Island, so you merge it again, so you have a general manager, assistant superintendent, and the rest of them be service takes, or labor, or something, we renamed them, something like that, they don't work across the city, they won't just be on one side.
So we will have a office manager for the water department?
No, that's the position, you move under the rank, the water department clerk.
And all they be doing is doing checks and balances.
Have we gone whatever that office manager position would have gone?
It would be, it would be payroll, paying the bills, checks and balances, yes, ma'am.
But that answer to the mayor? But that answer to the mayor, not. Okay, I. I think it's practical, what I'm hearing is a practical issue, they won't have the ability to do what they've done over the last year, and it take a, you know, how sanitation fees they were made, if they work under the mayor, they can't do that, it's, it's a nut we can't do there, that it take.
For the record, those who maybe listen to this audibly, the water department lets the cost of hundreds of thirty-five thousand dollars per month for sanitation revenue, but when citizens pay the water bills, and that money has not been making it from the water department receipts to the city's general treasury, it's been continually illing the water department receipts, and use the water department purposes only. And so, Mayor Lake Franklin is saying that he wants more control over it, so the water department clerk, what he's asking is they're moved under the direct direction of the mayor's office, is that correct?
Correct.
So, what would we have to do to?
To adopt us?
What department?
Could be number forty.
You would suspend the rule, places on the third final read, reading the title on it. Now, there still has to be a fund amendment, of course, just so we can pass the budget. So this is great position, it does not fall on this position. Now, as it relates to the people who are holding the positions, one caveat I give you, this would increase whatever salaries that they have, what effective date do you want this? Question, you have a water department general manager, that'll make a sixty, if you pass it, make the base way, send the people to salary.
Why, I can't say.
My, my, if we don't take that, because the new council, I want these gradations, because they come in to look at, look at the budget.
If we pass without mercy clause, it goes effective thirty days.
Say that again?
If you pass without the mercy clause, it goes effective thirty days.
These are all bad.
Okay, that's, even if the existing mayor doesn't sign either one of these, it's still going to affect, right?
The new man is, huh?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, I want to make sure I got it written down, you know.
As a practical matter, here's the practical thing, this man, even if he vetoes, every action is taken today.
Yeah.
He has five days to lay before the body. His term ends tomorrow.
Yes.
And so, the mayor, Lake, would have to lay before the body, so even if he's vetoed today, everything can happen, if the mayor never lays it before the body, then the veto is pointless. Right. And so, it's not a veto until it's laid before the body, the next regular meeting, the next regular meeting, it's Tuesday, January the third.
Okay, I have other questions. I understand, but I heard, the difference in, in the difference in the mayor and the chief of staff, as far as their roles and responsibilities, but I feel like the mayor should be more than a dollar higher, or the chief of staff should be backed up, so, as this mayor. Now, the, I do want an explanation, or just tell a little bit more about the executive secretary, because that's a lot for the executive secretary. To me, is there gonna be something else, because then we adding the purchasing officer, compliance officer, so, tell me a little bit.
Look, as I understand, with Mayor Lake Franklin, and with Attorney Valdez, said, executive secretary, you are the best that you can say to that, secretary there right now, is known as chief of staff at this point. And so, the position's held by Ms. Allen, and I think she makes forty-eight, five right now. The chief of staff is a new position, and listen to what they've just said, it's a new position.
No, she, chief of staff.
What I'm saying.
It may not have been the, the roles and.
Right, what I'm saying, from a practical standpoint, they, I'm not trying to put words in there, what they're saying is, chief of staff is a misnomer, the true role was executive secretary, and they're trying to add a chief of staff that has a responsibility of chief of staff.
I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's a great thing.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's still backing back to executive secretary and chief of staff, I understand the role.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Of chief of staff, but executive secretary?
But you're saying it's too much money to start?
No, I think so.
And then, then, let me give you this as well, the chief of staff in this base pay ordinance, takes the position and the money that you had as a public works director, from a money standard, that's what it takes. And then, the executive secretary takes over the chief of staff that's currently in board this director, from a money standard. But now, your first, that was your question, your question was, why is it so high, what is he or she going to do? Uh, the, the invention of that is that they're going to supervise those other staff people, your purchasing officer, your compliance officer, uh, your water, whomever, they're gonna help the mayor with those, those, those people, uh, in terms of your inner office stuff. Your chief of staff gonna supervise all of them as well, but if you did more with those outside of office, your sanitation director, your street director, your lantern director, your water, those stuff, you know, the executive secretary ain't gonna be expected to go out and get them the dish.
I understand.
Chief of staff might have to go out and get them.
Right, they should, but it's, they should, but it's not, they should. I'm acting executive secretary, I, I think that's a lot to begin.
Do you have suggested numbers to lower it to?
I think the, the mayor should make, uh, more than, you know, the chief of staff, you go either back up to sixty and sixty-five, I don't see this a dollar.
So, are you suggesting that the other person's chief of staff down to sixty?
I'm saying either go to sixty and sixty-five, or sixty-five and seventy, that's just me, I want one person.
I agree, I, I think the sixty-five and seventy.
And I think maybe executive secretary, what do you all think about, uh, forty?
What were you thinking about, what?
Forty for the executive secretary, I mean, that's just, that's a good thing.
But that's a question for your, your, your.
And I'm saying if those blue roles, I, I, I do, you know, have the supervisor, I do, but, and I, I want somebody that's, you know, capable of doing the job.
But the thing where it says that you don't have to wait for a hundred and eighty, that ain't to apply for, for being to be qualified for ranks or anything.
Producing for a hundred and eighty days, nine.
So that's three months, you know, they show they self improvement, like, you know, that's, that's, no, I said it down today.
That's something we need to look at, because, yeah.
Your whole range vary slightly at points, what Ms. Crockett's saying is, maybe you could start, even more, give, uh, honors of what, uh, Ms. Davis is saying, Mrs. Davis, and Ms. Crockett. Uh, Ms. Crockett, yes ma'am. Yeah, what she's saying, considering that they, they would be evaluated after ninety days, that you may want somebody, the doors open, they, they want the clerks off or something, they're not, they're bringing them down.
Everything's locked, everything's locked.
So, what, what it seems like, Ms. Davis said, maybe you start by lower, if they show merit, then they could be raised higher than that.
Again, that's another thing we need to talk, discuss, is the, the ninety days, at, at ninety days, what do they get?
No, there's nothing.
There's nothing guaranteed.
But I'm saying, you know, at one time, we need to talk with something, with God, like, if someone, if that's, we need to add a rule, okay, okay, well, then that's all you take, either on there.
I wrote into the base pay order, I said one more, that nothing entitles to pay increase, after the probationary period expires, because there was this, uh, this came along during Mayor Willis's term. Everybody expected that after a hundred and eighty days, automatically get bumped up to what the other guy had given, and so we changed the language of the base pay order, so, which means you just, you're eligible for pay increase.
But they don't.
There's nothing guaranteed.
It's got to come here for approval, so there has to be a formal request for it, because it's not gonna be budgeted, if you being budgeted, whatever you make, and there's no extra money to pull from. And it stopped mayors from just giving people, uh, everything.
Okay, so after ninety days, we just keep working, right?
Yeah, yeah. So somebody has to come and ask for a request for pay increase then.
But that, that's, that's really, you said.
Is it Article three? The current says six months, this one amended down to ninety days.
Because even if, even if they, they curve, they still.
No, they got to give.
That was right, and ninety days.
Ninety days, you're not acting on show.
How, how your attendance work, that, you know, so, how you support this?
So, Ms. Davis is just suggesting to take it down to forty, forty as a executive secretary.
I don't have to take it.
And chief of staff down to ninety-sixty. Well, I was just, I was, I know you had a separate suggestion, I was saying what Ms. Davis's suggestion was.
Said chief of staff, yeah, she said chief of staff down, leave it at sixty-five, and then take the mayor up to seventy.
And do the, uh, take the sixty.
Carry it at forty.
Okay, yeah, that's what it was, what, if.
So, are you suggesting the mayor leave seven at sixty-five, leave the other sixty-five, is that your suggestion?
Four, four to seven, I think is what she's saying.
And that means the mayor goes seven, and the executive secretary goes four.
And, and we're not talking about, uh, travel expenses, this is just straight, not even.
The understanding is, straight salary, uh, no more, uh, car allowance.
The car allowance was a tax, I mean, I mean.
Right, but currently, one set of security, that's all rolled into salary minimum, is it correct?
The car allowance was food program, they say like, they just run food program.
Then you wouldn't make it.
Yeah, we're sixty thousand, we want to say you got forty thousand on that.
But I said, I'm using the, the city's vehicles, but then you send private.
Yeah, you can get that down a lot.
Oh, oh, right, we all.
Okay, come on, let's make that clear, y'all, y'all on the new one.
We had that one there, we had that one there, two, two left, it's here. So, so, we, we have an agreement on this, same there?
So.
We have nice, we have nice to your, to your.
Who made the motion?
Ms. Crockett made the motion to suspend the rules, place the third final reading, reading title only, for order number forty-two, I believe, Ms. Davis, Mrs. Davis. With the limited correction, it was seventy-four the mayor's office, and forty for the executive secretary.
Oh, that's, that's what we was going on, I know we was going on wrong, wait, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no motion yet.
I'm sorry.
On this, um, what the, what the current secretary make?
Not enough.
He said, no.
Uh-uh, not forty-eight, but just ten years out. Uh-uh, I'm being serious now.
It's over, it's over sixty.
Current secretary.
But he makes over sixty thousand, he makes about sixty-eight.
He got forty-two thousand, sixty thousand, I'm going on that last year.
No, he is over sixty, what's your?
Sixty-one or forty-two, forty-two.
Sixty-seven thousand for one.
Like five, no, he got fifty-five. Say, we just play.
That's what the five, you know, that's what, that's nothing five. Well, no, I'm saying with, with the executive secretary, secretary, I go forty, forty-seven.
Forty.
Forty.
Mm-hmm, he's forty-two.
You're gonna just take two on there, right?
That's all?
So you say sixty-eight, and the secretary gonna follow too?
Yeah, so he goes, you want the mayor to go sixty-eight, and the executive secretary go forty-two? It has to be recorded, it was open discussion. It can't be not recorded.
Oh, I thought it could be two.
If you violation of law.
What's that?
To not record.
Go ahead, the, the way I can.
With the sixty-eight or seventy?
We did it once, we tried.
Okay, okay, well, what, what'd you say?
You're leaving yours at seventy?
Yeah, I need to make, I got my, my, my room on this page.
And then, you're gonna leave the secretary at forty, okay, already? And the treasurer.
Let me tell you something about this, um, I know the person or, how, but what does the compliance officer?
Compliance officer, HR being renamed to compliance, is what, what Mayor Delance Franklin said, HR being renamed to compliance, is what, what he said.
So, so, the compliance officer gonna make sure you complying with all of your, your laws, trying to hire, you find, and tracking people's benefits, tracking their attendance, tracking their, uh, promotions, type stuff, and making sure you got one personnel file. Many times, cities get in trouble, because the department here to have personnel file, that isn't her office, when the employee should have one personnel file in the whole city. They shouldn't have a write-up over there, and then one over here, that's different, all that kind of stuff, so your compliance officer is to make sure that all of those things are followed.
I understand the question, I mean, we need to know.
People shouldn't find out when they get fired, they had write-up, they didn't know nothing about it. Actually, Lieutenant Andrew said, an employee should not be fired, should not be surprised when they get fired, they should say, I, I, I saw this couple, couple, kid right here. That's what Lieutenant Andrew said.
That's true, somewhere, so, you don't have to write it.
Yeah, but you know, we, we paid the lawsuits around there, you know, you paid some lawsuits that there was a paper.
Okay, any other questions, or issues, or positions?
Okay, let me go back, I have something to say. So, on these, the story, say you pay by the city, or you take it from under the, uh, the.
We shouldn't have anybody under that, that should be getting paid by the city. I don't know why we still have anybody under one of those temporary services, I gave them pay a long time ago, that should be city employees, do we have anybody under one of those services?
Yes, Ms., uh, Ms. Oh, well, Ms., uh, Ms. Moody that works for us now cleaning the building.
She's not under, she's not working with a temp service.
No, she's not a temp service, she's just paid straight.
That's what I'm saying, you know, at one time, we had people working under there.
C and D, yeah.
No, I ain't talking about that.
No.
I'm talking to you, all the people.
After that, you had attorneys.
Right.
They paid by somebody that's under that, same to come from home.
No, we don't have those anymore.
Okay, I have a question, please, please, then perhaps, uh, it was already answered, I was just like. What did you all say about the, I know you explained the difference in the fire and the police chief, but what did you all say about the assistant chief?
They gonna be renamed to captain.
You took, you took it out, you took the position out.
And that is going, that's going to be?
They'll get, it's going to be captain, they, 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 they be whatever the rank he is, it could be keep the same people, but you have a captain who could do whatever assistant chief might do. As long as, when we got to the point, I think in the city, that when we small enough, that you don't need all of those assistants, especially when you, police and fire department has so much range for you. It's like you got a bunch of people that's a job, and nobody's gonna work it.
Okay, but they're still have that type job, they're just moving down, like.
Right, base pay is, base pay itself says, if you, if you change positions, then the salary doesn't go down.
So that would be like a captain in the police department, you can be a captain, hire a captain, everybody?
Hire a paid captain, yeah.
Yeah, in Article three, this has been in the language since we did base pay in two thousand five, with everyone on.
Which one you on, mister?
Article three, they both the same, Article three, when we, right behind the bold language, it says, after ninety days, the next paragraph says, should a person be transferred and already have earnings above the base pay, he, he should retain, and then current salary be reviewed for merit based on other increases consistent with the current, the then current policy, and so, they won't lose their pay.
Because if you lose the title.
Correct, that's, that's what your base pay is says, since consolidation.
Right, I understand that, it's a lot of people you need.
What, what's this?
About the naming assistant chief, you saying that we need more people, boots on the ground, for the animal business.
We certainly need more boots on the ground, certainly, within the police department.
Okay, now this water, y'all said, what, that's a, that's a, you have to look for it. It's seven-three thousand.
Well, the seven-three, I heard one, right, for sixty-eight, the salary was seven-three. Uh, one of the things that he said, when he stood before you on the floor was, the salary was not competitive, that's why you couldn't get. Wanderer, wanderer.
Get asked for more money, not that.
I mean, it's not, it never happened.
But you don't think that's enough, let's get moving. I'm.
What I'm saying is, as it used to be, it wasn't competitive, but we would always have these fights about, you know, why don't they make this much, you would always be less, but it was never competitive, I mean, in terms of what people get and what city. I want to see best people that we can get.
That's true, me too, I expect with this water, man.
And the thing, and the thing that I look at too, is the best people will, will be before you, they'll be able to speak, not me trying to explain what your water manager, because I, I mess it up with it. He or she, whoever, needs to be able to come here and tell you all exactly what y'all need to know, not me trying to explain anything, about, tell you, be why this, uh, they can be able to answer your question, they're, they're not, it's not a goal. But this, this salary to people we give, they always the good people.
So, are we gonna work on the salary in, in some other positions, because I know we, we have an issue in several departments as far as overtime is concerned?
Yes ma'am.
So, taking some of those people to make them salary?
Yes ma'am.
To make salary, they have to make at least fifty-nine.
Well, well, with their overtime, like, that's why, that's why we, we.
The time, the, the.
Yes it is.
It was about fifty?
One of the things I'm gonna say is about, about the salary.
Some of it is our management.
A lot of what we have, the city has an issue with management.
Right.
And the issue with management is, is in every department, a lot of it, we have a lot of government waste that forms overtime, et cetera. A lot of it's gonna depend on the department head's leadership, and, uh, having adequate personnel. Police department says adequate personnel, in the water utility, what has been happening is all the memory prevent rental fees, and then y'all voted on diesel. The one thing that never was addressed was, that great, all of this overtime, because they're constantly having to watch the active monitors, watch the wells, watch the pumps, et cetera, a lot of that is, once you fix the core issue, overtime goes away, so fixing the margin issue, getting, getting the pumps, et cetera, uh, with popular to take away with the, the overtime. And then, it's one of those things that, that despite it, though you all are backed many times, you all have been provided with, why the overtime is so high into the departments. Fire department bragged, but they said our overtime is way down this year compared to other years, uh, the other departments are, through the roof. As for the record, you know, Luke said, that I'm not how I pay the fishing city, but I pay up in comparison to some of the police and some of the, is that right, Mr. Ramus?
Right, absolutely right.
But, and that's another thing, with these department heads, if, if, if they can't get the overtime, then they, they kind of, it's some, some, something would happen with them, but they're not gonna come in here like the Exxon, that, that's gonna happen for the past three months, then around about eight, eight-thirty, you got three officers, the Sydney Exxon, every little morning it happens, you know, so, that's why you get a police chief, and, and, and you go, you go pay him, that he needs to take care of, when the fire something happens, you know, you, Joe starts about the fire, they be in the ballpark, or they be running and getting stuff, but you look at the water department, same thing, they, they, they react, so, everybody got a hangout spot, and hell, this side of hell is neglected, and you'll see, I was over here the other day, and those police officers backed over there, in a wheelchair.
You hear who?
Yeah, okay, paying, paying his water bill, and hit a, a, protection, in a wheelchair, knocked him out of jail. I said, so, but, you know, they had somebody watching, why you paying your water bill on the clock? I mean, so we got a lot of.
Yeah, he was on his parade.
Not that, 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 that clock, you just gotta work, praise love, that, that would be there.
Well, he was crazy, my talent, he was crazy for the money, who was, who they going for?
Yeah, yeah, it, 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 you know, it, it's like, it's, uh, some of the cops, uh, parked down the road, when the brakes didn't break up. I mean, it, it's just, as it relates to the base pay, so you all have any other questions about any of the financial, was that?
Why you got? Why you got it?
With the corrections, let's, yeah, I just, not having a question, I just want to clarify. We going-
Now, there's still actually a funding issue before, like, this, this, this chief of staff. It, it's, it's created, as, as, as practical matter, until the majority class, the, the funding is just in the base pay.
I know, I, I'm, I'm just saying, but I, you know, I, I, I mean, you know, but anyhow. We going seventy for the mayor. Forty for the executive secretary. Am I right on that, I said forty?
Forty or forty-two?
Forty, forty-two.
Forty.
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yeah, they're saying forty-two.
And we got need the water director.
Seventy-three five.
I'm gonna water director, I think we can get this deal. You can get somebody to do a job seventy-three five. I'll tell you, when I became the mayor in two thousand five, I was shocked. We were paying, getting, getting sixty-eight thousand, getting two thousand five. If we put that in CPI, that's a hundred and two thousand every day, that's just one half of two thousand.
The bill for those for additional CPI consumer price increases.
Now, I mean, that's all, just, 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 just as commentary, um, finding a water director or manager who is competent should be one of my most important, uh, examples. Because we can see what lack of competence has cost us in terms of money.
Very.
I mean, it's probably the biggest of, he started thinking about paying for pumps instead of fixing pumps. There should have been a director who was bringing the bell about that years ago. Um, when you think about all of the losses we had in water department, to where we're actually supporting the water department, general funds, we shouldn't do. If, if we don't get somebody who can manage that department, and do it in a way where, you know, it runs like it's supposed to.
We can see this, bro.
Gonna blow your money in, and have all of these water companies. It's, it's not a job that, that you can just give to somebody because of money. We be competent, and able, and that's very department, I mean, we, we suffer from, from competence. I, I had this product, I said, like, we suffer from comp, com, competence in different departments, in community. I mean, just taking people who worked on a campaign, and, and, and put them in positions that they shouldn't be in. It started all the way going back to labor. And, and it has cost us money. That's my two cents, are we ready to, uh? Are there any other changes, uh, to be made to this proposed base pay orders? If not, is there a, uh, motion to place this order, what number is it?
Forty.
Forty.
Is there a motion to place this order, it's number four, number third, uh, final, we didn't meet the title up? Motion by Crockett, is that second? Second by Davis, uh, Mayor Kirk to call it.
Davis?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Five, yes?
Is that a motion, oh, and I wanted to fix the number, and basically, full-time employees have been in all of the prior sets of witnesses for other purpose. It needs to be motioned out.
So, move, motion by Crockett, is that second? Second by Davis, Mayor Kirk to call it.
Etherly?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Five, yes?
Now, uh, Mayor Frank, if you want the version clause, it goes in effective meeting, if not, it goes in effect thirty days.
One clock.
You married to clock?
One clock.
Isn't it married to clock?
Yes.
I don't see, I can't prove this.
It's off the table.
Oh, okay, it's on, it's on. Is that motion for the absentee version clause?
So, move.
Motion by Crockett, is that second? Second by Franklin, Mayor Kirk to call it.
Crockett?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Franklin? I have four yes, two ass. There she go. Davis? Five yes?
The final item on the agenda is, no, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, I'm sorry, I have four on here, the agenda is twenty twenty-three budget. And, what's the? I'll just jump out and say, my understanding is that we will, at some point scheduled after our first meeting, some budget workshops, and, uh, start doing the work of, uh, filling in the numbers with the assistance of treasurer, clerk, and everybody else. Department heads, and they have something to manage, and that'll be the new members of council. And so, um, we'll pass on that item, and item number five is the personnel issue. And this is gonna require an executive session.
So, do you need to know something about this?
Yes, sir, we do. Uh, the city attorney has some documents he's gonna provide to the body. So, uh, there's a motion by Crockett to go into executive session to discuss personnel, that is, is that second?
Second.
Second by Davis, uh, Mayor Kirk to call it.
Second, uh, Cro- Crockett?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Five yes, one ass.
The executive session, and city attorney is going to do the, uh-
Is there a motion for the council to go back to regular session?
So, move, second.
Okay.
Motion by Crockett, second by Davis, to go back into regular session, Mayor Kirk, yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Whoever I missed, I forgot, I got lost track, okay.
Is there a motion regarding matters taken up in executive session?
I mean, that we, uh, reinstate all the people who were sent off for reduction in, in force.
Motion by Crockett, second by Davis, to reinstate all employees who were, um, terminated pursuant to reduction in force. Mayor Kirk, what you call it?
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
All yes.
Is that motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Motion by Crockett, second by Davis. All the favors say ah.